All right, well, good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee's monthly meeting on, actually, February 25th, postponed from our 13th meeting because of the storm. And we're going to begin our meeting tonight by the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, adjustments to the agenda is just that there will be no executive session tonight. And we'll move on to our comments from the public. And for our comments tonight, we have something kind of special going on. In 2019, the What's Up in Acton Award was established, and we need to really give a shout out to Jim Driscoll for all he's done with the What's Up in Acton, for their Facebook page, and for all the positive information that he puts out into the community through that. So this year, our award is a person who in the past several years has gone far beyond what could be expected in contributing to the quality of life in our community. This recipient contributed to numerous volunteering efforts and has made their influence felt through the region. This year, the award is a little bit different than it has been before because we actually have co-winners. One of the co-winners is a resident who has defined community service, someone with a vision of a better place, a place where people help one another, and anybody that needs help, where people are cared about, all their neighbors, no matter who they may be. More importantly, this person has acted on her vision and pulled many others along with her, changing the way they thought and acted. You can find her working throughout the area, preparing and serving and notifying people about community events, preparing dinners for people that might have fallen on tough times. You also find her working with a spatula, serving food, and helping organize dozens of fundraisers in town whenever a community member is in need of help. A few years ago, a handicapped resident was in need of a ramp at their home, and this recipient showed up on the day that the deck and ramp were being constructed to help dig holes and move lumber and do whatever else needed to be done. She's been given a strong vocal voice for the children of Acton over the years, and she's been a real champion for the Acton Elementary School. It's people like her that make Acton a great place to live. She's always giving back to the community and always quietly and under the radar without any recognition. But tonight, we thought we'd change that a little bit and make sure that she got recognized for all of her selfless efforts that she's done for the community and for the school. She won't only be honored tonight for all of her generosity, but we've also asked her to come on to false pretenses to make, to do the presentation for the second recipient of the award. So congratulations to Lori Williams for being named the co-award.
That's beautiful.
Can I just stay?
Yeah, stay right here. Yeah, we're ready for the second part of our award.
Okay. So this is why I really thought I was coming tonight. The 2019 What's Up in Acton Community Spirit Award is purely based on recognizing people that give of themselves to make Acton a better place for all of us. This 2019 recipient does exactly that on a continuous basis. For many of us, this little school that we've gathered in tonight is the heart and soul of our community. It's a place where we, as parents, trust this staff, teachers, administrators, to protect, teach, love, and help our children thrive. Besides all the wonderful staff that filled this building with educating and caring for our children, is a leader that, quite frankly, has taken our school by his own example to a place that every child deserves to be part of. You'll find him on the playground, playing in the snow with students, often being reprimanded by teachers for rolling snowballs, or greeting students early in the mornings as they enter the school or in passing along the hallways of the school. He has taken the time to honor students and teachers with group pictures to email home to parents to celebrate their child's successes. His positive attitude and genuine kindness toward every student, his respect for every staff member, along with his business acumen, have Acton Elementary second to none. It is with great pleasure that I would like to award Superintendent John Ross.
Yay! Surprise number two. Thank you, and thank you, madam chair. What else have we got up our sleeve tonight? Thank you so, so much for kind words. Oh, thank you, and wow. This is awesome.
Why don't you bring yours up here, Lori?
Yeah.
We'll get a picture of both of you.
Oh, this is great. Let me just try to move some things while kicking out.
Want me to use your camera?
Well deserved.
Thank you, everyone. Amy's got it.
Yeah, right over here, guys.
Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Wow, what a surprise. Wonderful surprise. Thank you so much. Gosh, get my act together, getting help run the meeting.
Yeah, don't let us down now.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
All right, are there any other comments from the public? No, nobody can talk that, right? All right then, let's move on with our agenda. And I will look for a motion next to accept our consent agenda.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded to accept our consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five and O. Okay. Do any of you have any, we'll move on to number four, any questions for any of the administrators from their reports that were in your packet?
No, I just want to say that I saw something come through the MSMA talking about the math scores throughout the state.
Yeah, we got that in the budget tonight. We'll look at it later. Yeah, good catch.
Anybody else have anything tonight? No, then let's move on. Do we have anything at all tonight from our, any committee reports from either the long-range planning or the policy committee?
We didn't have a policy.
No, we did not. Okay. Then we'll move on to new business, which is update on the school calendar.
Sure, so we, my hope is to have the school calendar for your approval, your vote, in probably in April. We're going to take March, just right around the corner, and because Labor Day started so late next fall, it's the last possible date it could be. It's the 7th, right? Yeah, September. We needed to just identify a start and an end date. You know, the end date is always a little nebulous, but the start date is pretty fixed. So we worked with the cohort leaders and kind of just draw a poll amongst some staff, nothing too technical, and came up with a start date right now of, we would, the kids' first day would be Monday, the 31st, and the kids would do four days and that Friday off, and that Monday off would be the holiday. So we're really starting like a week, call it a week before, and that seemed to make sense. I'm waiting to hear back from Sanford what their schedule is, but ours will be independent of theirs, and they'll probably come up with something pretty similar. And we're going to do our two teacher workshop days, the Thursday for us, excuse me, the Wednesday, Thursday before that. So Wednesday, Thursday, teachers come in with that text, get prepared. Friday off, kids start Monday, and they like that extra day for themselves to kind of get things ready. That's not our agenda. Now, the next move is to give this, and I sent out this afternoon to the presidents of the support staff and the, and the teachers, to take a look at it, and Kim, to make sure we got all of our days contractually correct, make sure we don't have anything within those start and end dates that seems a little strange with, you know, we put a holiday on a Sunday or something, just the little things. Everybody's going to put eyes on this. And then Kim and I'll sit one more time and then hand it off to you in April for an approval. By then, I'll also have Sanford's schedule.
Just have the right number of days. That's all I ever ask.
That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing right now. That's the next move. I just wanted a start and end date because that was a kind of a tricky one with September 7th being the holiday. So that was just an update. I have this. You'll get a copy of it when what's in between is correct. I can't guarantee that right now. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Seems to make sense to start earlier rather than to think about going into the summer. At the end of the year, everybody's, when we've had snow days and everything, everybody is ready to.
Well, were you going to discuss that tonight with, considering it's school calendar of this?
What I will most likely do, what I found, what I've found over the last few years is, it's pretty much local control as to, as long as we meet the minimum school days, we can determine when school starts and ends. And we also now know that, that five hours of time that we give back to the school can be a school day. So there is a formula I can use, and I'm going to start sharpening up the pencil probably at the beginning of March.
Because we're at five snow days?
I don't know. Where are we at?
I think we are.
We at five now?
Yeah.
So we're due to get out on the 19th, right?
Okay.
On what day, the 19th?
19th. I'll talk amongst the cohort leaders, and in the last two years, I've come to you and said, how about we, as long as the staff needs to decide this, are they willing to stay through ERD? Meaning, work that hour, go home at the end of that day so it wouldn't be an early release on Wednesdays, then we start ERD after school, and we still have our ERD commitments throughout the school year. But each one of those hours counts towards getting some days back. I'm not ready to have that conversation with you now, but I'll probably give it to you in form of an update, be thinking about it, and I wouldn't be surprised if in the March meeting, we're probably voting on something. Yeah, I think if we get out ahead of it.
All right. You mean, you want to wait for more snow days?
We'll see what happens. We're not even at a February yet. March is the snowiest month of the year in Maine, believe it or not. We're not even into it yet.
Well, that's when you get the pin.
I know, I know. Yeah, the big storms, the big, heavy, wet stuff. Yeah, so we'll see.
Thursday's not looking too pretty right now.
No.
Hopefully rain.
Rain.
Don't count on it.
Okay, yeah, it'll, it'll rain, but not in Acton. It'll rain in Sanford and spring grab a little snow up here. Okay, 6-2 is retirements.
I do, I have two retirements that I have in writing that I would like to present to the school committee, and I can do that now publicly. And they are for two people that have quite a tenure here at Acton Elementary School. At the end of this year, both Sylvia Emery, who's our kindergarten teacher, and Norma Pedagro, our current first grade teacher, will be retiring. And I think between the two of them, they probably have over 50-something years of education. And I have one, I have a couple of retirement letters that I'll share with you. I'll send it off in my packet this, this Friday to you because one is quite lengthy. And to give you a chance to take a look at those, because it's pretty heartfelt. And I'm sure we'll have a chance to recognize them sometime before the end of the school year. But I just wanted to report that out to you because you're going to see some of the budget impact on that tonight as we look at that cost center.
All right then, we're ready to move on to old business, which means now we're going to move into our budget.
Do we need to vote to accept those retirements or not?
I haven't, yeah, well, we have. I've had one retirement since I've been here.
We normally will.
Do we normally? Thank you for that process of operation.
I will look for a motion then to accept, with much appreciation, these two retirements of our veteran teachers.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we accept the retirement with regret for Norma Pedagro and Sylvia Emery.
Seconded, okay, seconded by Linda. Anything else, any other comments? There are none, all those in favor?
Okay, thank you. My team, any chance, there's nothing in the budget. Kim and I can cover the rest. There's nothing in the budget that pertains to your cost centers. I'll make sure I get the notes for getting us out of this because it's, one of them's kind of lengthy. We might be a few minutes here tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Up to you, if I were you.
I'm going to hang around for a while.
Are you, okay?
I am. Hang on.
Okay.
Just the dog at home, so.
Okay.
Tears.
You want me to start the budget piece from here as I always do? Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Take right over.
Okay, and we have some warrant and finance guests here with us. We're into our second to last meeting on our budget. We'll be meeting again on March 5th. We'll be doing special education, which is a good, good piece of the budget, special education services and revenue. We'll be doing that on the 5th. Tonight, we will look at the operation of the main office and most of our teaching staff, pre-K through eight. And why don't I start by making sure that our warrant and finance committee members that are with us tonight each have a copy of our norms. I think you'll recognize these from times past. Let's start our meetings with these.
We'll be good.
You'll be, ah, ah, you sure?
Well, you're not speaking.
It's early in the meeting now. All right. It's early in the meeting, Virginia. So there are six strive statements that we'd like to start our meeting with, and those six strive statements, excuse me, are, "We will strive to work together as a community that values the education our children receive at AES. We will strive to be fully present at the meetings by becoming familiar with materials and being attentive. We will strive to invite and welcome the contributions of every member and listen to each other. We will strive to be involved to our individual level of comfort. Each of us is responsible for airing disagreements during the meeting rather than carrying those disagreements outside the meeting. We will strive to operate in a collegial and friendly atmosphere, and we will strive to be responsible for examining all points of view." With that, what I would like to do, in your packets you should have, let's start with, the small one is Article Two, Article Eight, School Administration. And just a reminder, we work from the left to the right, and there's some comparison data there. And when we get to, there's not too many here because there's only a couple of places that we have in benefits, and when we get to the pieces where it's main state retirement and FICA and that, it's boilerplate. Well, just kind of push us right through it rather quickly, and I'll pause if there's any questions. So we'll start with, I just look at the budgeted for this year for 2000, excuse me, 2020-21, which we're living in, and then 1920, and then what we're going to be budgeting for for next year, which is 2021, and then with the variances, sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's negative. Principal salary for this, in this case, is up $1,610. Support salary is up $1,000. Substitutes, it's flat, zero. Subcaller stipends is up $900. Stipend benefits are up $78. Principal benefits are up $152, and support benefits are up $2,033. Group insurance, principal group insurance is up $246. Support staff group insurance is down $743. Substitute benefits are flat at zero. Now we're into main purse, is up $67. Contracted services is flat at $350. Software maintenance is up $350. Telephone is flat, no change. Advertising is flat, no change. And printing services is flat and remains at $100. Traveling conferences, no change. Supplies, no change. And then, there's only one left. This is the short one. Dues and fees, up $100. And that is all we have in Article Eight.
So just my question is, this subcaller stipend is up because?
It is, it is up because, it is up because, because I changed the process this year. We now call out, if somebody is going to be sick, and it's not, if somebody's going to be out of the building, and it's usually a sick call if they're going to be out, it comes to me this year. So they need to check in with me between 5:30 a.m. and quarter to 6:00 in the morning because I have a pattern of my morning, and that's the easiest time to get me, is the best time. Or before 9:00 at night, the night before, if they're sick or a child is sick. Then I need to get ahold of the subcaller in that window and say, hey, here's who I have out, this is what I need, and that becomes a text messaging. It's a lot like when we have snow days. Andy and I are up at 4:30 doing that. So the process is a little bit different, and it's more on me, but it's worked better because I'm the one that needs to figure it out when I get to work anyway, but it's also more on her. So there's where the change is because it's more work for her. And yeah, that's the process this year. And you know what? It's working out great. Works out great. We haven't had to hit a bump yet.
So one other thing under, under here, Kim, I just wanted to check with you on the, on the blackboard system. Are we still thinking of moving out of that?
This is not my software. This is the alert system.
That alert system that goes out.
Oh, this is the other one.
Cancelation.
Oh, yeah.
Blackboard.
What is yours? Mine's blackboard, this one's blackboard.
Oh.
I know.
Yeah, it's very close.
Yeah, so this is the one that does the automatic.
We use that quite a bit. Matter of fact, we have to be sensitive on how many times we're sending out alerts because I know Sanford High School sends them out too, so we don't want to overwhelm people's voicemail boxes with alerts, but we want people to know what's going on.
Has anyone ever complained?
Yeah.
Just once to me directly.
Once in a while, once in a while, you see something on What's Up in Acton, on the Facebook, like, I got so many calls, or I got this, or I got that, or whatever, I have too many calls, or whatever, but.
Yeah. In my case, I think the person didn't have a landline, and I think it's a per-call thing on the cell phone, it might be, so I never really considered that.
That could be, yeah.
I'm guessing at that.
Acton has always been less than what Sanford does. Now that dealing with the high school one, it's a lot.
Right, right. And I think sometimes people have kids at the elementary school, and they also have kids at high school, and so they get a double dose.
What would they expect?
Yeah. That's all right, it's good that it's still, we still have it, it's still working and.
That it works.
It's great that we have, that we have a way to notify parents of anything that's changing, going home early, or if something, if a bus is late, or whatever. I mean, it's good to have that, that avenue to go through.
Okay.
All right.
So now we get into Article Two, which is regular instruction, and this is, as I would say, the meat and potatoes of the budget outside of special education services. So we'll start, excuse me, several pages long, and I'll pause between each one. We start with teacher salaries, which in our budget year and the variance, the variance is up $44,572. Now you'll see some changes as we go through the budget. That includes, you'll read in the narrative, that includes the math coordinator position.
Okay.
Okay, and we just, Kim and I have a formula we use, and we have a, we have kind of a target amount, and we could be that or below is the goal.
It's also moving one from second grade to third grade, too. So you have, instead of 11 teachers, you now have 12 teachers in this group. You'll see, when you get down to the K2, it's less because we moved a teacher out of that group.
So no one's left. We just moved a teacher, which moves the teacher to a different cost center because the children move to a different cost center. So that's kind of interesting in a small school, we kind of follow the kids. So wherever the kids are is where our resources are, and then that shifts through the cost center, cost centers. That's a great, great thing to note, Kim. Thank you very much for that.
A question on that.
Yeah.
Math coordinator. Last year, there were 11 teachers. This year, there is, I mean, there's 12. Is that because of the math coordinator?
It's for, it's, no, good, good question. No, it was because we had a person who was working in the K2 cohort that got moved up to third grade. Now she's working in the three through five.
So the way this budget works is, the cost centers have to be reported to the state by grades. Kim can probably explain that to you about it, but we have to, we have to do the cost of like K through two, and three through five, and six through eight. That's the way the state wants them, so that's the way we'll have to be looking at them on here, so.
So does the math coordinator have other duties?
Yes, so.
Is, is this a permanent position?
Yeah, so we present.
We didn't even discuss it yet. Tonight's like the first night we're discussing it.
Right.
Oh, all right, I thought this was one of the earlier ones that I missed.
No, well, there's been, there's been a presentation on why we need a math coordinator.
Yeah, we've talked about, we've talked about the need for one, for bringing up our math scores.
Yeah, I had heard that.
Okay.
Originally, at the beginning of the very first meeting.
Right.
That you were contemplating this.
I'll just give you a recap.
But I hadn't heard anything more since then, until I saw it here.
So the recap on that is, and you were here for that first night, is, and I'm glad Mary brought up too, that the state is seeing some struggles in math scores statewide.
Throughout the state.
Throughout the state. So Acton's response to that is for one year, this isn't a permanent position, but with some, some, looking at some retirements that we have and working with the budget with Kim, we're able to work it out, we believe, by the time we get to the end of the budget process, that it shouldn't have a large impact overall to the, to the overall budget. We'll see what it looks like when we get done. But with the retirement savings, we should be able to bring somebody in for one year as an employee to work with all of our teachers and do vertical alignment for math. This person will work directly with Lori Lodge and me and the cohort leaders. The whole idea is this person will be an adult educator to work with our adults to help the math scores, but also teach our highest needs math students, too, to try to help remediate some of them, to offset and help the teachers get those kids where they need to be. Meanwhile, working with our current staff to help them learn and understand new math process to hopefully help our math achievement. That's the job description. I got a rough draft job description as of two weeks ago, and we're still working it out.
So is the, the salary cost plus the benefits cost worth adding this position to the staff as opposed to going to an outside consultant?
We considered that, and in all, in reality, is, it's kind of a placeholder right now if we needed to, and we've talked about that, whether we needed to go outside for a consultant or whether we actually hire somebody in-house. As long as we have a placeholder in the budget for that, the actual, the who and how many hours and what that looks like, that'll be determined when we get closer to the hiring process. But we're quite a bit ahead of the hiring process right now. I'm probably looking at a May or June hire for this position. Okay?
So the rest of the increase in salary is because of contracts?
Because we moved somebody, yes, we moved another teacher that's already in the budget over there, so there was a, that offset a little bit, yeah.
So the K to, there's four, no, where's the salaries for four K to two? Is that true? Yeah, okay.
The teacher that's going from two to three is following a bump in kids, right?
I know, so did we have five last year?
Last year, we did. Because we had two second grades. Now we have two third grades. This is the difference. So we're living in it today, but you're seeing it now as of last year.
Yeah.
Yep. Based on last year's budget, a year ago, that's what we had. Now we don't. It's different. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good questions. Was I on ed tech salaries is the next one?
Yeah.
Ed tech salaries are up $1,533. Substitutes is flat, no change. Teacher benefits, and this is for the warrant and finance committee members that are with us tonight, this is the language. We went through each one of these and what each percentage means. You'll see this a lot in this article. It's the same language. So if you have any questions in regards to unemployment tax at this rate or Medicare at that rate, let us know, and we can explain it to you. But you'll see that quite a few times. So that was up $1,257, but ed tech benefits is down $2,491. And the, and the benefits language is the same thing, it's boilerplate. Professional group insurance is down for this group, $35,480, and that's simply due to a change of insurance. Insurance is down, okay? But because it's a big group, it's a pretty big number savings. That's why it's that number.
Excuse me, going back one.
Yeah.
How many ed techs are there?
Two.
So I'm on ed tech group insurance, which is down $2,099. Substitute benefits is flat, zero. Main purse is another one of those. That's main state retirement that you're going to see. That's a boilerplate language at 4.16%. You'll see that throughout. And then you'll see it again here. That was $1,855 for teachers, and respectively, it's $1,333 for ed techs. I'm now on repairs and maintenance, which is up six hundred dollars. Equipment lease is up five hundred and sixty-four dollars, and that's a very particular number. That has to do with usage. Traveling conferences is down fifteen hundred and fifty dollars, and that's because the six through eight team is not going to the, to the New England Conference this year. Next year, I should say. Supplies are down twenty-one hundred dollars. Testing is flat and has been for a number of years at four hundred. Turn the page. And you should be on one that says books and periodicals. Up seven hundred and, uh, excuse me, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars.
Hold on. Can you go back to testing?
Yep. It's flat at four hundred.
Shouldn't there be a number in that column, the second, one, two, the third to last column? No?
No, apparently, there's no, there's no.
Nothing to say.
No charges, no fees.
Oh, so it's not carried over, it just disappeared?
Yeah, we don't need it.
We don't need it. I'm sorry. I said flat.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's flat, zero to zero.
Flat, zero, zero.
You know, you go up, you go up two more years, you won't see it.
Right.
That's because we got rid of it in nineteen twenty. Okay, thank you. Flat because it's not there, Mary. Okay. Equipment. Equipment is up two thousand, one hundred and sixty. Computer software for N W E A is up five hundred dollars. Dues and fees is up three hundred and eighty dollars. Programs and concerts is the same at fourteen hundred. It's zero increase. And field trips is up two thousand, twenty-five dollars. And this is the year that, this will be the year that the, um, grade six, grade eight will go to the Boston Museum of Science. I believe that's a once in every three-year experience for them.
I thought it was once in every, it used to be once in every two, now it's three?
Uh, the sixth graders in, probably.
Six, sixth, seventh, and eighth, if you hit it when you're in one of those grades, you go.
Yeah, it used to be seventh, eighth, seventh, eighth.
Teacher salaries. Here's where you see a difference of, it's less fifty-two thousand, nine fifty-two. And that's a movement and retirements. Did I get that right, Kim? I know it's retirements, but it's the movement and the retirement. So you saw that person move to the third grade, and then we have those two retirements that I announced tonight. And then ed tech salaries is up twenty-five, uh, excuse me, two thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And substitutes for that cost center is flat, it's zero, no increase. Teacher benefits is down twenty-seven eighty-one. Ed tech benefits is up forty. Professional group insurance is down twenty thousand, one forty-nine. Again, goes with the teacher who moved. And ed tech group insurance is up ten thousand, one sixty-two, and that had to do with the change in policy for the employee. Substitute benefits is zero, no change. Excuse me, it's flat at eight thirty-five, but no change. And then the retirement main purse for teachers is down twenty-two oh three, and main purse for ed techs is up a hundred and four. Equipment lease is up nine hundred and fifty dollars. Traveling conference is down two hundred dollars. Supplies is down twenty-three hundred dollars. I'm going to turn the page. Make sure I, we all stay on the same page. And you have testing with Montes and Pennell on top? Okay?
Do you want to, do you want to see? Yeah, do you just want to see if anybody has any, any questions before we move on?
You bet. I'm hoping, feel free to jump in at any time. Do I give that little bit of a pause, wait, and we can go back at any time?
Well, mine's the third line down.
On the first page?
Equipment for the, I guess it was, um, can you tell me what the two thousand, one hundred and sixty, what type of equipment we're talking about? Is that, I know it says for P E, music and science, but is there anything in particular?
So basically, like, the teachers, they, you'll see that supplies have gone down quite a bit.
They request things, yeah.
Yeah, so what they did is they moved it to equipment instead of their supply line. So they have the same amount of money that they have. They've just moved it to different line items to be more accurate to what they're really.
P is a cool, equipment might be a purchase and it's got a shelf life, five, ten, fifteen years. Whereas a supply might be.
Weeks and months.
Right. So like Ryan's, like.
It's almost the same amount.
He just bought hockey equipment. And all his hockey equipment, because that'll be good for, you know, five years. Unlike teachers that will, they'll have paper and, you know, arts class. You know, that's gone that year.
So the supply, that's why the supply lines in different places have gone down, then?
Yes.
And this, it's gone into the equipment.
Supply down.
It's pretty much a wash.
Some have said, "I don't need supplies, but I want more books." So you'll see that books have also gone up, too. So the teachers, I've asked them to be a little more specific about, when they're doing their budgets, tell me really, really what you want. You know, where do you need it? And, because a lot of them will say, "Well, I have this money in supplies," but, and, and we do. We say, "You can move within your budget." But is that, like, the auditor said, too, to be more specific? Yeah, because we have. I mean, you want to just be more, okay, I, I know next year, like Title One moved away from programs and want, and is looking more at books because books are going to be more beneficial to the kids than maybe the author coming in for a day or something like that. They'd rather have the books. So they move their money to the books instead, so.
The exact difference between equipment.
Yeah.
And supplies is a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah.
It's less. It's a hundred and forty dollars less this year when you add the two than it was last year. Yep. Good questions.
Any other questions from anybody? No?
Okay. So now we're at the top with testing. I'll give it that pause. You can jump right in. Testing is, um, no change at eight hundred dollars. Excuse me, books and periodicals is up four hundred dollars. Equipment is up fifty dollars. Computer software is up a hundred dollars. Dues and fees is down a hundred dollars. Programs and concerts is down two hundred and eighty dollars. And field trips is down five hundred dollars. We're into professional salaries for pre-K now. It shifts to pre-K. And there's a contractual increase for our two teachers of four hundred, uh, four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And an ed tech increase in the same cost center of nine hundred and three dollars. Substitutes is flat, no change at thirty-three hundred. Professional benefits are up eighty-six dollars. Ed tech benefits are up five dollars. Professional group insurance is down eighteen hundred and fifty-one dollars, and the ed tech group insurance is down eleven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Substitutes benefits in pre-K, no change at three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then we get into the retirement for ed techs and teachers at two oh three and thirty-seven dollars respectively. Traveling conferences, no change at a thousand dollars. Instructional supplies is down two hundred dollars. Books and periodicals is down two hundred dollars. Equipment is down eleven hundred and fifty dollars. Programs and concerts is up a hundred and fif, is up a hundred and fifty dollars. And field trips, no change at nine hundred. That ends that page. We only have one left. We're doing great. Questions?
I did, hold on.
Okay. So we get into the high school and G T next.
So do we have any numbers knowing for pre-K? Because we, I see we have the two teachers.
For next year.
But only one ed tech?
There's one ed, there's always been one ed tech. Two teachers and an ed tech. Yeah. Yeah.
Because they each only have.
So we're going to.
I think one time, the first time we started, we had two ed techs.
Did you? Because you may have shifted somebody then because you didn't have the numbers to warrant the two.
Right.
Because you have that ratio. We have eight to one.
See, that's probably the third grade class. That's tremendous. Yeah, it was.
It'll be, it's a big, it's a big third grade class. So that would be four years ago. Five, five years ago. Because kindergarten, one, two, three, that's five years ago. We have no changing in staffing, and we're anticipating that we'll be able to stay within our ratios.
You put the feelers out and you know.
Well, we just put, we just printed it. We're going to do our parent night, um, the same night as the town vote, April sixth.
Did that before, correct?
Have them come in here in the library, work with us. And if they choose to, they can go right over to the, right over to the gym as a citizen and support the school.
How many do we have in pre-K now?
Ten and eighteen.
Twenty-eight.
I thought that's what they started with.
So, Kim, the reductions here in, in this section of, uh, for both professional and medical, the reductions in insurance, is that because of a move? Or is that because they changed their plan?
No. Okay, so.
Or is that because it's less this year?
It's less.
Okay.
So last year, we budgeted eight. It didn't come in, and it came in lower. So you're looking at a higher number from last year. But this year, I've only budgeted three percent based on what our loss ratios were for the end of the year. So it's that combination of, you know, there was, we didn't know what our number was last year. I still don't know what our number is this year. But, I mean, based on just our ratios. So I, I think three percent is probably pretty darn close where we're going to be. So it's that, that difference, plus a little difference that they made in the, in the contracts with the teachers and so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, these last areas have to do with the, well, the first one at the top has to do, excuse me, with the high school. That's what secondary education is, is our commitment to our high schoolers. And you can see that the first line item is down thirty thousand, six hundred and forty from projected because we're, have fewer students, well, four less students going into the high school as we're projected now. Now, I want to know, that's who we know is graduating. So you get your seniors leave, your freshmen come in, given nothing happening over the summer. So we budget on what we know, but we don't know if somebody's going to move or come in during, during the summertime, or during the school year, for that matter. So that's, that's our, that's our budget for the high school. And then our secondary education, private schools, is down thirty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-eight because we had four students last year, and there's been some changes. So we only have one student.
When will they know? How long does this price go on for eleven thousand, two seventy-two?
So now, what it is.
The changes in December, usually in December.
Yeah. So with Sanford, the way our contract is, it's always the year prior. So I always know how much the amount is. So it's whatever the average cost was the year before. So.
So that's what it is.
So now it's always, okay, now I know what my per-student rate is. Now I just need to figure out how many students I have, so.
And if we should have five students move in, that's what we have that reserve account for.
Correct.
For tuition, which is, you know, would have been nice to have had that a few years back.
So that's the high school piece. There's only two lines there, private and, and of course, um, public. And then it shifts, your, your teacher salaries, it's, um, the next line or the third line is actually gifted and talented. And that's one gifted and talented teacher. And there's a change in the salary of, of, it's less fourteen forty-nine. That's because it's a change in person, too. Our other person that taught G T in this budget that we're living in is, was moved, and then we're budgeting for somebody else that's in the position for next year. That's just maybe one step or difference. Uh, then there's substitutes, no change, twelve hundred dollars. Teacher benefits is up twenty-one dollars. The group insurance is, is up seven, seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight because it's a different employee with different benefits.
That's just for one teacher? It's gone up that much?
It's because the.
Different plan.
The person that was there before didn't have a full family coverage.
Yes.
This person has full family.
Plus, there were some changes in the contract, too? Well, those, those were to our advantage, though.
Yeah.
Changes in the, in the contractual changes.
So basically, you're saying it costs twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three for a family plan for one person?
Right.
On the teacher's contract.
And the fifteen was basically employee plus children?
No husband.
No husband.
Do we have different?
Well, they had a husband, but.
No, 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 sorry. I didn't get it game up wrong. It's who you're covering in the last name.
Employee plus child.
So we also saw, Virginia, you picked it. That's a good question. Because we also saw the difference when we have teachers move within the building. They're not new employees, but their salary and benefits go to a different cost center. You'll see that increase or decrease as well. Because the employee moves with the kids, and they might be, they might have a different package than the person who doesn't replace them, but where they left, it moved into a new cost center. So usually, we'll bring it up in that cost center, and then you'll see the savings in the other. In this case, I'll, everybody here, now in public, we had a person who applied for the job within the school, so it was really a transfer to G T. And, and that worked out quite well. So, but when she transferred over, she also changed her benefits because things must have changed in the family. Okay. Now we are in to those benefits that are, substitute benefits are flat at one twenty-eight. And then we have the teacher retirement, less sixty dollars. Staff development, no change at five hundred. Traveling conference is up six hundred and fifty. Supplies up two hundred. Testing, no change at five hundred. And it looks like books and periodicals fell off the charts back in nineteen twenty. Dues and fees just fell off the charts. It minus three fifty this year. Won't see that again. And programs is up sixteen hundred dollars. And I have a note that says, "Move costs from other lines to program." So this teacher's doing it differently than our last teacher in regards to budgeting for the G T kids. And remember, the G T kids are kids that will get some field trips based on them testing into being gifted and talented. I know we do a lot of work on post-secondary and secondary and post-secondary planning for some of these kids because they are in an accelerated program. Field trips is down five hundred dollars. And then you get your total expenditure. And we're done with that cost center.
How many gifted and talented students?
Great question. I can give you the factual number, but I'm going to rough it out in my head as I walk through and I see what we're doing. Great question, I can give you the factual number, but I'm going to rough it out in my head as I walk through and I see what we're doing, so.
Just an estimate.
Kids that are identified, I'd say hovers right around a dozen. Then you have the explore program, which is really pre-K through eight. And this teacher's model is excellent because it follows a model we used several years ago where she has some students as pullouts, but she's also in the classroom where the kids are. So if they're in an algebra class and they're doing well in algebra, she can be the teacher in with Mr. Noel, helping that small group of kids that are accelerating in algebra go even further in the classroom. We didn't do that the last couple of years, and I think it's important that we do that. So we've added that third leg to the stool.
So our gifted and talented teacher actually goes into every classroom.
And pulls out, yeah.
And she pulls, pulls out accelerated kids, but we also have the benefit of using her services in every classroom. So it's a.
With change in personnel, so change in kind of job description a little bit.
It's a win-win for, for everybody, really, yeah.
Seems to be going great.
Get the benefit of some extra things with, from the classroom teacher with a gifted and talented position that they wouldn't get with a regular teacher, so.
Any questions on this or in general, because that's our work for tonight. We meet again on the fifth. So just to help us out, I think I have this in my head pretty good, so the fifth, we finish the budget. We have special education, which will take some time, Kim and I, and Sharon and Kim have some work first, Kim and I went over the schedule tonight. Then Kim and I and Sharon have some work, and then we'll bring to you the special education budget and our projected revenues. That's on the fifth. Then on the twelfth, which is a week after that Thursday, that's the school committee. March meeting, and the majority of that will be to adopt the budget. Okay, and that's what we'll have for the agenda mostly, other than some other things. And then on the.
So without looking at special ed, this is what I see, with all the cost centers we've done, we're in parentheses, in the negative, seventy-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. So tell me, special ed didn't go up seventy-nine thousand?
Mary, Mary shattered her pencil too soon. You know what, let me answer this one, we can't tell you anything about special ed, in all honesty, seriously. We can't tell you if it's up seventy-nine or down seventy-nine, because we need to work with Sharon, and there's, and I want to be careful because our special, our population's so small, I don't want to get into who special ed is. But we have some needs, and we need to see what those needs are. I've looked at this from a number of angles, as I'm sure you know I have, and we're going to be okay, but we need to just nail down the special ed piece, for sure. We're doing great, we're doing great so far going into this. For Roland and Virginia, I want to make sure that I can find my calendar on this new phone. Ah, everybody. March, so I got us to March twelfth, which is the school committee meeting. I believe the chair of warrant finances bookmarked the eighteenth for you guys to then review our entire budget. That's, okay, good, so that got communicated to you. I, also, it's my understanding that that's still scheduled to be here, because there's a meeting of its town on a Wednesday night at five o'clock. Was that, true statement, six o'clock, is that be true?
Six o'clock is more, more like the meeting on Wednesdays.
So that's why the meeting's here. So Dennis and I talked, we had a phone call, and he said, let's have it here, let's have it on the eighteenth, and that's when y'all are here, and we're over there, okay?
One, one other question about, how many assistant principals are in, what do they do?
So it's a one shared position, it's assistant principal instructional coach, so it's a full-time job shared between two kinds of things. So the assistant principal probably, you probably have an idea of what assistant principals do, and that's in regards to discipline, classroom management, working with teachers. The nice thing is she's also the instructional coach to work with teachers on their professional practice. That, that's the position, that position's been here since I've been here.
Yeah, it's a combined, it's a combined.
Combine a lot of things.
So you said it's somewhere in here.
Yeah, I got the nod from Roland, so there, it sounds like you're well aware of that. Without Dennis here and being able to ask him, I don't know, so last time I talked with him, everybody understood it was going to be the eighteenth, it was going to be here, okay?
I wrote it down, okay.
Yeah, okay, all right, I think we're good. All right, so now that we're done with that piece, it's back to the chair. If you choose to close the meeting, I just take notes for Jen because she went home.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions or anything? Can we help you with anything else? No? Been very quiet, Roland.
Oh, the, the other thing.
You can't hear?
No.
Is, is it still on?
I'm on, I'm on record.
We haven't talked about grants that you've gotten this year?
We haven't talked about revenue.
We've talked about revenue, that, that.
But that will be, that will be our next meeting on the fifth, we'll be talking about revenues, correct?
Special ed and revenue, correct, that is correct.
Special ed and revenues.
State revenues, any federal grants, anything we got.
Federal grant, state grant.
I was just going through stuff I had from last year, and I said, I didn't see any Article Three stuff yet, and you talked about that, so.
Yeah, Article Three's bad.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. All right, then I will look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Make a motion, five fifty-three PM to adjourn.
Second.
I have a quick question for you, John. You've got two people that are retiring, and you took a vote to accept their retirement. You can't stop somebody from retiring.
He tried to one year, didn't work, so I give up.
I mean, I understand what you're doing, but how do you possibly say, no, you can't retire?
Yeah, no, the school committee said, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I won't be here on Monday.
All in favor? Buy vote.
Five fifty-two.
Bye, thank you.